If council remembers, in early 2024, we had a heavy engagement from the community about what they wanted to see with regard to short-term rental regulations. At that time, or at the end of that, we had, council had decided that they wanted to focus on a permitting process, a registration process, and dealing with some things like occupancy and operational restrictions. Also wanting to make sure we were collecting hotel occupancy tax. And to get that up and running, because it was a fairly heavy lift for staff, was putting in place a temporary prohibition. That temporary prohibition goes, ceases on March 4th, 2025. Since then, and Chris and Dakota will go through, we've had a lot of successes. I'm very proud of our team. They have, you'll see other cities that adopt regulations and don't really dig in to make sure that we're actually holding people accountable to really enforce. This team has done a very good job in making sure that the words are not just words on a piece of paper, that we're actually going in and making sure we're doing compliance. And we've seen a lot of success in that regard, and we'll go through that. But we also have heard that council has been, I've heard individually from you guys, that you are interested in exploring density regulations. And those, what density regulations on short-term rentals can mean a multitude of things. And so we're going to go through what those things could be and how other cities are tackling density regulations. We're also going to show how that would look on a map if we focused on one versus another. But ultimately, if you guys want to do density regulations or explore that, we need to go back out to the public, continue to get public input on that, bring that back to council with something that's right-sized for our community. So what, the other thing that would, if you guys want to look at density regulations, the other thing is, when that cap is, not the cap, when the temporary prohibition is up, any STR can come, new STR can come throughout the city. They just have to follow our permitting requirements. They can go anywhere in the city. So, and that would still be the case with, when the cap is gone, but you may want to, and we're going to be seeking input from you today as well, of whether or not you guys want to look at, possibly on March 3rd, adopting a maximum number of permits that could be issued throughout the entire city. So we will, if council's interested in that, we will bring that back on March 3rd before the prohibition is over. And then at that time, we can look at our density, get input and bring it back to you. But with that, all, that basically summarizes everything they're going to tell you. We could just go home now, or you can actually hear the details. So, Chris, I'll hand it off to you.
Thank you, Claire. Just to reiterate, really appreciate code enforcement and my senior business analyst, Dakota Cannon, for really digging into it, making sure that there's a process set up, that it's organized, that we can pull data from that, and that there's follow-through on the ordinance that was created. So it's been a year, and just going to talk to council a little bit about how things have been going with the permitting process. But first, talk a little bit about the interim prohibition, some of the data that we've pulled from that, some of the violation and enforcement that has been going on specifically with that. And then look at current permitted short-term rentals within the city and those zoning districts that they're in, the zoning that they're in. Dakota did a really good job of surveying Texas cities and looking at different density regulations that are out there. And the other way of looking at short-term rentals and possibly making limitations are zoning regulations. So there's a lot of different information with that. And also putting Louisville, areas of Louisville on a map to look at those different density regulations. There's several slides that go over that. And then we'll discuss some policy considerations and what council might look at for future public engagement concerning the issue.
Can I add one thing? Also in your backup, council, we added an updated report on your, on the short-term rental survey that's out, so it's in that packet you have. It's still open, so we're collecting data continuing, and that'll be presented to you in the future on March 3rd, if you guys want us to bring something back. Also, if there's people in the audience that want a copy of that, we have extras here at the door, so they have access to it, and we will upload it on Legistar on the website as well after the meeting.
Yeah, so that survey will be open to the public until, I believe, the 28th of February, and the link is available on our short-term rental webpage with cityoflewisville.com.
Can I ask you a quick question about the survey?
Sure.
So have we, did we implement our new survey process to try to keep meddling out of the answers yet? I know we just talked about it, so I'd be shocked if it's already planned, but...
No, we utilize the tools. So we have started the contracting process with ZenCity, but we are using our current...
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And so, just a rehash on the interim prohibition. That expiration date is March 4th, so the city council meeting coming up on March 3rd would be an opportunity if any changes were to be made. And going to talk a little bit about the data that we saw during the interim prohibition and what staff saw as we're continually checking our software to see what short-term rentals are advertising. We identified 37 total properties during this year that were newly operating after March 4th. And looking at some of those, we were able to see that we might not have had a positive identification as an address upfront, or a property was able to show us that they had investment-backed expectations. So six of those were allowed to go through the permitting process. But for council to keep in mind that there's a group of short-term rentals that have newly advertised since March 4th that have questions on when council will be thinking about possibly lifting that ban or extending that ban or prohibition. But there's a group of short-term rental folks that have basically removed that listing. They may have extended the stays greater than 30 days, so they're not considered a short-term rental by definition. And then there's a total of eight properties that have come up during this time that are, that code enforcement is going forward with enforcement actions.
And, Chris, I'm sorry, I wanted to add to my answer to Patrick. So the tool we were using for the survey is a ZenCity tool. It does allow us, which is different than what we did for the citywide survey, this tool does allow us to remove all duplicates. So that'll at least help from people, you know, submitting multiple ones, yes.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. Those eight that you said enforcement is still ongoing, does that mean that they're continuing to operate without a permit?
So that is correct. Those citations are currently with the court, and so we have to allow for due process.
To clarify real quick, sorry, first time you say this, I don't know if I'm doing it right. So to clarify, those eight are people who are violating the interim prohibition. They would not be eligible for a permit unless they proved they were operating before that interim prohibition happened.
Right, so they haven't, at this point in time, they have not been allowed to go through the permitting process. So we worked, Dakota worked with ITS to create a map of all short-term rentals that are currently permitted within the city. So anything that's permitted right now has a green dot. Any short-term rental that's going through the application process, and that could mean they're waiting for an inspection, or we're asking them to update their information, they're posting for occupants, so we're working through that. And then the red means that there's some sort of enforcement action. And just keep in mind that the duration on those items that are red differ because there may have been a short-term rental, it's newly advertising, or something of that nature doesn't necessarily mean that it's been non-conforming or non-compliant since March 4th.
Chris, can we park your role real quick? Because one of the questions I got repeatedly, because I supported the interim prohibition, was, well, Patrick, you live in Castle Hills, and Castle Hills has an HOA. You have rules against that. You can see there's three dots up there that look like the Castle Hills. I know of at least one that operates in Castle Hills. This is why it's important to have layers. You know, you can try it at the HOA level, and then if that doesn't work, you can try it at the city levels. That's a great example of why I supported this, even though we have an HOA happen where I live. Thank you.
Right. And one additional thing that I'll say about this is that of the locations that we positively have identified an address for, we currently have a 93% compliance rating. You know, I've heard a lot of numbers out there that Louisville has much more short-term rentals than 90, but just keep in mind that those are addresses that we positively identified, and that we're constantly updating the data with our software company to make sure that we have the most accurate data possible in Louisville.
And again, sorry to interrupt, Chris, I'm so sorry. Data is my thing, so just to be specific, those 90 short-term rentals are properties we positively identified that are allowed to get a permit. So when people are talking about the total listings, they're talking about a much wider net than what we're focusing on. And not all listings out there are actually short-term rentals. We do a lot of data cleaning to get to that.
Chris, I had one quick question, and it's mostly because of what Patrick just said. If there is an HOA that prohibits STRs in their neighborhood, are we going to approve a permit? Like, is that part of the process that we look at? Does your HOA allow this? Or is this just completely separate, and it has to be enforced separately?
So there's a lot of... So there's a lot of different HOAs out there, and I'm not familiar with all the different bylaws that they may have, whether it's allowed or not. You know, we've had that conversation upfront with Castle Hills and like know that short-term rentals are not allowed, and have those conversations with management out there. So because of the size of the HOA with Castle Hills, we are able to look at that. But as far as the specific bylaws of all the different HOAs within the city, I don't know if that's necessarily possible. But we would be willing to have that discussion with them should they reach out. Just a quick look at where, there's a couple of different ways should council decide to look at density, limiting density. One of those ways is specific zoning. And this is just basically showing that the majority of our short-term rentals are found in residential, of course, single-family residential, and town home 1 and 2 zoning, and then also mixed use. So some cities, when they're looking at regulations on density, they will state that short-term rentals aren't necessarily allowed in commercial zones, things of that nature. But Dakota will dig into a little bit more of that when she goes over the survey data for the cities. Looking at single-family zones, this is just information that we pulled currently with our short-term rentals of those 90 that I talked about earlier. 77 short-term rentals are permitted in single-family zones, and 26 of those were identified during the interim prohibition. So if the interim prohibition was lifted, there is that possibility of 26 additional. And then, as we mentioned earlier, that within the Castle Hills HOA, short-term rentals are prohibited from operating. There's a lot of things in our current ordinance that have additional restrictions on short-term rentals in this type of zoning. And, you know, the difference that I wanted to show was that there's this other type of zoning, multifamily, where, you know, you're dealing with possibly higher density. And, you know, when we go through the notifications, and when we've identified a short-term rental in multifamily, it can be a little bit more complicated because there might be disconnect from the owner to the property manager, to the person that might actually be posting the short-term rental. And so we've run into some situations where it was a little bit complicated to find out, talk to the person that is responsible for making those changes.
Thanks, I have a question. With, back to the single-family, is that for the entire house, or would that 77 include if there's just a single room within that house?
So that includes those short-term rentals that are also renting possibly a single room. When we looked at all those numbers, there was a smaller amount, probably less than 10% that were actually renting a single room as opposed to the entire home.
Okay.
Currently, in our ordinance, that was approved by council, there is nothing that, there's nothing as far as density that would prevent an entire multifamily complex from having short-term rentals. Currently in our ordinance, because of the requirement that an owner shall obtain a short-term rental permit, we haven't had any multifamily come forward, any multifamily owners come forward and say, you know, "I'm interested in doing a short-term rental for something previous to March 4th." We have found multifamily locations that are advertising, but at this point, there were 11 that showed up during the interim prohibition. But at this point, none of the multifamilies have a permitted, a short-term rental permit issued.
Chris, on those, do we know if the posted short-term rental in a multifamily, do we know if that was posted by the building owner, or if it was posted by one of the building occupants?
So in this particular case where one was identified and these 11 violated the interim prohibition, it was where somebody was, basically, it was the occupant that was subleasing.
Yeah.
Yep, so that happens a lot, a lot of times when code enforcement has that conversation with the property manager. You know, the property manager might be trying to contact Verbo or Airbnb to have that listing removed, and sometimes that's a pretty slow process, plus they can list on, you know, 100 different other sites. So we've run into some difficulty there with that.
Yeah, I mean, my assumption, I know in my documents that that is not allowed for a tenant to do that, so I'm assuming that's probably standard for the apartment complexes as well.
That's what we're finding, but, and of course, there's a process that property management has to go through with all of that, so it's been slow.
Thank you.
Preserving neighborhood character, these are some of the concerns that we hear from residents and how short-term rentals are affecting their specific neighborhoods, where we see higher concentrations of short-term rentals in one particular area. You know, whether it's identified as a violation of city ordinance or not, there's noise, parking safety, and quality of life concerns, and just transient populations being present in the neighborhood. Current short-term rental regulations, they allow the city to revoke a short-term rental permit if the owner receives two, more than two citations. And so, you know, at this point in time, as mentioned in the video earlier, we have not had to go through the revocation process yet. And then requirements of short-term rentals to notify guests of that information, we've made available in the pamphlet that they're required to post, and, you know, just to be reminding folks that are staying that, of the parking regulations, trash, and noise prohibitions in the city's nuisance ordinance. So just some strategies that we can look at that deal with density, and this is what we found in our survey cities, is that some cities look at permit quotas and possibly looking at a maximum number of short-term rentals that are issued in a particular zone or year. There are geographic restrictions that could be due to specific types of zoning, that could be allowing short-term rentals in a particular zone, for example Arlington with their entertainment district. And then there's also percentage maximum on particular areas, whether that's a block face or a block. Some of those percentages vary, but I think a lot of them that we saw were like 12.5% per block or per block face. And then it's important to really look at community engagement, soliciting feedback, not only from folks that may not support short-term rentals, but also from those owners and their viewpoints on this particular issue is very important. And then continual monitoring enforcement, using technology to track short-term rentals is constant. We may have a situation where they've removed a listing, and then it comes back next week, or they had put their short-term rental being able to be rented greater than 30 days, and then it changes two weeks later. So there's a lot of monitoring that's involved with just making sure that they're following through with compliance of the ordinance.
Chris, I have a quick question, if you go back a slide. So geographic restrictions, so prohibiting STRs in certain zones, I believe we talked about that back when this discussion first started. Has something changed where we can now allow this with a little more legality behind us?
Can I answer that? Testing, okay. We're providing you just a survey of what other cities are doing, and then we're going to go into executive session with our legal counsel.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm going to let Dakota talk a little bit about the information that she found with Survey Cities in Texas.
Hello, everyone. So we found 30 cities in Texas that do zoning or density-based regulations. And the key thing that we found is that everyone does this a little bit different to suit their needs. Most cities do have some sort of zoning-based rules, whether that means limiting or just having certain requirements based off the zone. A lot of cities use a combination of both zoning and density rules, and about three cities just have density rules, and those tend to be your most straightforward rules. Even with all of these differences, there are three main types that we see of your density and zoning regulations. You've got your minimum distance, or it's your STR from the lot. The measurement can range, and we'll go into that more. Your minimum distance from property zoned in a single family. Grapevine does that. They only allow short-term rentals in multifamily buildings, and that building has to be a certain distance from a single family. San Angelo does minimum distance from elementary or secondary school. And then you've got your maximum number or percentage. That can be per block or block face. We'll talk about that more later. And a multifamily building or multifamily development. And there's a lot of differences here on how people do that. They can do a percent or a number, and they can even divide it by this size of the building. You've got your maximum number per lot, property, or parcel, and that's really getting at your ADUs and your backyard cottages. You can do maximum number per zone. Denton does that. We'll talk about them more later. And then a maximum number in the entire city. Austin does an annual calculation, and they have a whole process on how they get to that. And they do, they limit the number of short-term rentals for a certain type of short-term rental. Again, this can get really complicated. And then you've got people who allow or prohibit in particular zones. Sometimes that's divided by like the type of zoning, whether it's allowing only in residential and not commercial, or the opposite, allowing only in commercial, mixed use, not residential. They'll have different rules for the overlay district, where they're, you're not allowed in certain areas unless there's an overlay district, or you can have the exact opposite. And then Arlington does their designated STR zone. So it's a lot. There's a lot going on. The other thing we see is that many cities allow general exceptions to those density and zoning rules. Not everyone uses these, but when we do see them, it's usually one of the four or a combination. It's about your existing short-term rentals. If they are already existing, they have to prove that they're existing, apply by a certain deadline. For cities that create types of short-term rentals, oftentimes there are exceptions for short-term rentals that are owner or operator occupied. If it's within a special zoning district, they'll have a special exception where there's just, those additional requirements don't need to be met, they're permitted by right. Or the density can be exceeded with the approval of a special use permit, and there's like additional criteria to consider for that. So we're going to go through a couple of examples, so you can see how different cities use these things. Arlington and New Braunfels, they both do zoning-based regulations. For Arlington, like we've talked about, like, Chris, thank you for mentioning, they've got the STR zone. They also do allow them in a couple of residential areas, and then in existing residential structures, in your non-residential and mixed-use districts. For New Braunfels, they are prohibited from residential zones, and in their STR code, they do specifically identify which zones are considered non-residential, and that's going to be your commercial, mixed-use, and multifamily. And then another thing for New Braunfels, in addition to the STR permit, they need a special use permit unless you're in a resort district. Denton and Plano both use density and zoning-based rules in different ways. For Denton, they have density rules in their residential zones. They have a maximum 1,000 certificates that can be issued in a year, 100 minimum distance rule, and then a maximum of two per parcel. They have that multifamily, 10% of units, at least two, and then it's restricted in certain commercial areas, your industrial and your public facilities. Excuse me. Now for Plano, they do have an exception for their existing short-term rentals. They had a deadline to apply by. And then for their new short-term rentals, they are prohibited in residential zoning districts unless you're in that overlay district. And even within that overlay district, depending on the base zoning, they may need live-in management to exist. New STRs are permitted, so sorry, I've said it so many times now, new STRs are permitted in legal dwelling units in non-residential zoning districts, except for one of their commercial zones, neighborhood office zones. They've got some rules for the multifamily, 5%. And then a backyard cottage in a main dwelling unit, only one of those can operate as a short-term rental. So for our next few slides, we're going to look at three different density and how they would work in two different Louisville neighborhoods, to really get a sense of what does this get us, how does it apply in Louisville. Our first example is maximum per block. Ulysses and San Marcos both limit per block. Ulysses does it by 12.5% or at least one. So in our map here, the green dots are short-term rentals that are currently permitted. The yellow one is in process. For purposes of this table, I've treated them like a permitted short-term rental. Excuse me. We've got 286 homes here. I've highlighted nine blocks, and then broken it down per block what that density requirement would look like. I'm showing you two different ways to handle rounding, rounding, whether you truncate it, so you don't do the rounding. If it's, if 12% of the block means like 1.8 homes, you allow one home. Or you can round up, and you'll see how that changes the overall numbers. So, like I said, 286 homes, nine blocks, and that could be 32 STRs allowed, or 36, depending on rounding. Some key takeaways, we do have a block already defined in the UDC. The key thing is those intercepting streets, and that's why you end up with this really large block here. All of these, if we were to do the 12.5% and one per block, all of these are within those density requirements, and you could have more. I don't think any block is actually maxed out quite yet. Now, we do only have 77 permitted in the city right now, so it's not necessarily like you would all of a sudden get 33 in this area, but you could. you would all of a sudden get 33 in this area, but you could. So now we're looking at a denser residential area. We chose this example because again, we've already got short-term rentals permitted here, but here's how your block can really change depending on the area. That blue is all one block because of how the intercepting streets are. So in this example, we've got 287 homes, four permitted short-term rentals, five blocks. And then again, we're doing the 12.5% or at least one per block, and I'm showing you the differences between truncated and the rounding. Any questions?
Love this. This is a great presentation. Thank you. Is block a legally defined artful term that we could, so it's not up to interpretation? It is what it is? Because when I think of a block, I just think of a square that houses are on.
Do you have the answer to that, or do you want me to answer?
I'm so sorry. I missed part of it. A block is defined, if that's what you're asking.
That is.
Yeah, we do have that defined in our UDC, so we would follow that.
It's not up to debate. It is what it is. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Oh, and something I learned thanks to planning, alleyways not part of the street, and that's also why the block. All right, now let's get even deeper, per block face. Two cities do it this way. Corpus Christi, they limit 15%. San Antonio does 12.5%. So we're going to keep that percentage for the sake of our examples. I've highlighted the, oh, sorry, highlighted the same blocks, and now we've seen the individual block faces. Now, this is not defined in our UDC, so if we did block face, we would need to have that in there. Michelle, let me know. The rule of thumb here is you're looking for a 90-degree angle. That starts your new block face. So same amount of homes, 287 homes, seven permitted short-term rentals, 33 would be allowed if we did the 12.5% truncated. I believe that's one more. There's a difference when you're dividing it up by block face, the percentages then work different. So sometimes you can have a different amount of total short-term rentals in the area. What you've gained here is more control. So in this green block, what you would see as a traditional block, two is still allowed in that block, but now you're controlling which side of the street it can be on. The flaw or the downside here is that, is your intercepting streets. So you've got several block faces that all come together right here. You could have one per block all in that area, and that would meet the density requirements. But with your one per, with the, sorry, by doing it by block face, some of these block faces are now maxed out, and they could not have more short-term rentals. Thank you for bearing with me. Okay. Any questions here before we move on to our next neighborhood? Going back to our denser neighborhood, now that big block has a series of different block faces. The challenge here is we would need to define block faces. We're looking for the 90-degree angle, but you can see here it curves. We know there's at least four block faces, but where do you put that angle? Some other things to highlight here, again, 287 homes, four permitted STRs, 18 block faces, 30 STRs would be allowed, which is less when you're comparing the block to the block face. Oh, but another thing to highlight, you've got a similar issue where there are five block faces that all come together. You could have five all right there. Or they could spread out. Only time would tell. All right. Our last density example is our minimum distance. More cities use this, and the question here is then, what range do you want to do? What makes sense for us? So, big thank you to Lauren Cook and Planning for putting this example together for us. I did not have the access or skills to put this together. Thank you so much to her. She came through in a big way. For purposes of example, we're doing a minimum distance for only one of those short-term rentals. I'm showing you the range of it. When you're doing 100 feet in a less dense residential area like this, you're basically, it's your neighbor. You'll have one house between. When you're doing 200 feet, two houses. Something to think about here are your existing short-term rentals. So these are all already existing. Depending on the buffer that we do, they would then be exceeding that density limitation, and how do we deal with that? Last one. Again, we're going back to our denser residential area. We've picked one of the central short-term rentals to show you how that buffer would work. It's typically measured from property line, so that's why it's not that perfect circle. The one thing I have to highlight here, it's just interesting, the nature of how the streets go. You've got three short-term rentals all along that same street, but the closest one doesn't get hit till 500 feet, the next one doesn't get impacted until 1,000 feet. But at that 1,000 feet, you're also impacting some short-term rentals over here and over there. Okay. So thank you for bearing with me. I'm going to turn it back over to Chris. He's going to finish that. He's going to finish this up. Apologies.
Thanks, Dakota. I knew you'd be tired after those slides, and I apologize to counsel that we had to go through all that. It would have been nice if we would have done the survey and found out all the Texas cities were doing things the same way, and this is what it is. But I had to show you a little bit about that there, that there really is not a city that's doing density the, the exact same way.
Chris, I have one quick question before we move on. This was great, actually. Thank you for that. This was really informative. When I do the math, it looks like, even though it's a 12, like if I look at the density, 12 and a half percent, it looks like practically speaking, it's about 11% because of just the way the blocks lay out and stuff like that, right? And I'm, I'm thinking back, we have 30,000 or so houses, single-family houses in Louisville. Does that sound right to everybody?
26,000.
Very good, okay. So this is maybe 2,800 homes if, if everybody took advantage of this, right? That's what, that's my math?
Yeah.
As if we maxed out, that feels...
Right, right. If, if, if we were talking about the maximum number, and then right now with our data, we're, we're showing like, you know, maybe 100 that we've positively identified an address for.
I think down the line, if we put this in place, that would be, depending on your viewpoint, best or worst-case scenario, I suppose, it'd be about 10% of our housing product would be short-term rentals.
That's correct. If we're looking at that 12 and a half percent, if we're looking at linear distance, those numbers may, may be different.
Okay, thank you.
And so, you know, it's, it's, it's not a right way or a wrong way based on what the cities are doing. It is additional review process for looking at these short-term rentals. So if, if council were to decide to, to look at this, it would be a little bit more difficult to go through the permitting process as fast as we've gone currently. A lot of short-term rentals don't advertise continuously, so that would be, that would involve continually monitoring that. And I've said this before in a workshop, but I was a little bit surprised that, you know, there were folks that were filling out short-term rental permits and, and going through the entire permitting process, and it wasn't necessarily a short-term rental. They were just doing that to not have a short-term rental in their, in their neighborhood. So there's, there's been some of that based on talking to, to other cities. You know, the, the software that's required for looking at linear distances from homes and identifying those parcels, or looking at block face, that would be software that we'd have to, to take a look at in order to make sure that we're looking at these things and also making sure that our GIS mapping is updated so that residents that are interested in a short-term rental can see where current permits are and if they would meet those requirements upfront, also providing that information to staff so they, a resident wouldn't necessarily have to call, you know, one individual that has this information to know whether or not they can get a short-term rental, or I think this location is in my neighborhood, and I believe it's a short-term rental, is it permitted? So we would really have to step things up with our GIS mapping to make sure that we make this information available to residents, one, that have an SDR concern, or two, that are interested in, in going through the permitting process. So moving forward, looking at community engagement, you know, looking at what Denton and Plano have done, you know, Denton, they did mailouts, postcards to get that information out in those areas where short-term rentals are located. They also held town hall meetings, and I know that we've, we've had several public input meetings prior to this, and also currently with the Zen City Survey that we're doing to continue to get that public input concerning, concerning short-term rentals. Plano actually contracted with a third party, and I, and I think that that went on for quite some time, maybe almost a year, where they had public open houses, and, and they met multiple times from June 2023 to February 2024. But, you know, looking at community engagement and what additional information that we can get from this, I think continues to be important. But as far as discussion, council discussion, I'll let, I'll let Claire talk a little bit more about that.
When you're ready, I'd... I'd like to take y'all into closed session under Texas Government Code Section 551.071, consultation with attorney.
And the attorney, sorry, not the attorneys, the council. We'll go to another room. Everyone can stay here, and we'll walk to the conference room next door.
So why don't we go ahead and, why don't we go ahead and do that now, and we'll, we'll break for consultation with attorney? All right, we're going to come back in a regular session. Claire, what do we got?
So to finish up our discussion on short-term rentals, counsel, I wanted to stop here and just have an opportunity to get your thoughts on whether or not you're interested in exploring a future density regulation. And then you saw the various different versions. Obviously, we're going to bring back any, like, we'll get public input, we'll bring back kind of further analysis, but is that something you want to see in the future? And we'll talk about the, the second part with regard to the March 4th timeframe after that. But first question is, are you interested in exploring density regulations?
Counsel?
That would be a yes.
Definitely.
And, and then also, when you're, if you can, when you're, if you're saying yes, also kind of talk about like which one resonated with you most, or if there's any other input you have.
Sure. So after all the presentations I saw, I really don't see us doing the 12, 12 and a half percent. I think that's just allowing way too many in there. I would be probably more in support of the last slide, which is maybe not 1,000 feet, but probably more closer to the 500 feet. Yeah, that one there, the 500 feet regulation, I think, still, still trying to somewhat keeps people's property rights, but still, you know, going somewhere in between and at, at the 500 foot level. If you look at the 1,000-foot level, I think you take on this, at least this particular one, it's, it's starting to, you know, you only got two out there, whereas you got really dense on the, on the 500 foot. So it seems like to me like the 500 foot is the, is the way to go.
Okay.
Other comments?
Okay, Claire.
Yeah, I'm the same way. I will say, I'm, I'm interested in seeing the studies that come back and then recommendations from staff. This is not a guarantee of support or, or, or asking for caps or instead, but I just need all the information to make a good decision.
So I, I have some thoughts. I agree, I agree that we need to have something that we need to explore, do a deeper dive into. I do have some concerns with doing a 500-foot distance because really then you're starting to encroach into separate subdivisions, and I think that's, I don't, I don't necessarily think it's there to say you can't have an SDR because somebody in that other subdivision across the street from you has one. I mean, I think that, I, I don't know if there are separate exceptions that, you know, we could explore with that, but I would be interested in that. I'd also be interested to know if there is a way to, I know at one point we talked about parking and whether or not a neighborhood could come together and say, we want to regulate parking on this street and with a certain percentage of signatures, if we could do something similar with, if there, because I do realize that there are some places in Louisville where density is really going to be an issue, particularly around the lake, that I can see where that would be attracting a lot more. Other than that, I mean, honestly, I look at the map and I think, you know, we've, we've really got things spread out pretty good across the city. So, and also seeing some of the numbers, looking at the number, if we're looking at a density with either of the ways that we've looked at it here, it does allow more than I thought it would allow, honestly. And so I'm more comfortable with that because I'm, I'm very sensitive to the, I don't want to tell people that they can't do, they can't rent out their property just because somebody on the next street is, it doesn't seem, it doesn't seem fair. But I do also understand that to preserve and protect our neighborhoods, there is some type of regulation that we, we probably do need to explore. So I think that's all my thoughts for now. I'll stop there.
I, I actually, I wanted to respond to that. So I do, I do appreciate that thought about, you know, you go into a different subdivision which has a different feel, a different flavor, because those neighborhoods do vary quite a bit. I am curious about, to your point, Councilwoman Green, is that it seems like we'd have that problem with 100 foot, because if there's a house that's on the border of one subdivision that spills over, you're still affecting another subdivision. So I don't know if maybe there's some way to make that a new, I don't know. I don't want to get too complicated and overprescribe it, but I acknowledge the concern, but I don't know how we get around that, no matter what the foot radius is.
Sounds like that we might want to also explore maybe the block face.
Yeah. Can we go back, can we go back to...
The one that I was, yeah, I was most interested in the block based, assuming there's...
That, that might allow us to address...
It doesn't produce undue exceptional work on the part of staff to come up with that. You, I think, Chris, you indicated that there's maybe software that, that does the block more easily?
Yes, we currently have that software within the planning and zoning department, but since we process the permits, we'd have to look at getting that so that we can do that part of the review.
Okay.
Go back one more to the block, because that one is already defined. I think this is going to get complicated on its own, so if we can use some kind of standard that we, that we're not setting that makes it a little easier. I'm amenable to, to three, but that's kind of the one that kind of caught my eye because there, there is a definition of, of what it is, and we don't have to define that. And, you know, when you're looking at distance, I could just see somebody being, trying to be petty to argue, oh, I'm actually 101 feet or something like that. I want something defined that both sides have to agree on, and it's not us setting what the standard is. I'm all for refining our ordinances because I, this is something that I've told a lot of people who've asked about it, I'm like, this is something that we're not, we're going to have to keep working at. This is, because we, we, as we see, it's not settled, you know, the state legislature hasn't given us any guidance, so we have to kind of keep working at it and nipping and tucking, so this is going to be a work in progress.
I do acknowledge and assure Councilman Barrett's concern that worst-case scenario, or best-case scenario, I guess, depending again on, on your thought process, is that you get all, it winds up being about 11% because just how everything lays out, according to the math I saw, you wind up getting around 2,800. But I guess all the stars have to line perfectly. You have to have somebody that's willing to sell, somebody that wants to buy, so it will probably be pretty far south of that, I would think. But that 12 and a half percent, is that just because that's what other people, folks have done? Is there any magic to that number? Could it be 10% or...
Mainly what we saw when we surveyed the different cities was a lot of 12.5%. I think one was 15%.
Okay.
It's one-eighth of the block is what they also clarified. So I don't, it could be a reference point for planning, I'm not sure.
Okay, all right.
Okay, and I think I, I get where everyone, everyone's interested generally in exploring or having the conversation continue. To, to be able to do that effectively, what we would be doing is going through a public, public input process. We currently have a survey out right now, which is giving us great data. It's not completed yet. I know that in that survey right now, it shows a, a strong support for setting a maximum number of permits per city, but then also it has it for density regulations as well. That'll just be a data point that you, that you will have available. We'll... We'll also do public hearings like we did before and outreach into the community. That will take time to do that. So I would expect that would take about four to five months. Your general, your temporary prohibition is up on March 4th. We do have the ability to set a maximum number of permits per citywide while we are looking at that density requirements. If that is something council is interested, we are prepared to bring that to you on March 3rd.
Counsel?
Do you want to start?
You start, yeah.
Okay, so I will just say my thoughts on just looking at, we said, Chris, you said before, we have 26,000 single-family homes in the city, correct?
So... Residential parcels, yes.
Okay, so, I mean, if we're looking at the percentage of what we have, it is, it is so tiny. And even when you start to look at the numbers, when we work through some scenarios of doing density requirements, the number that would be allowed versus the number that we actually have, I, what it says to me is that I think the market is dictating that we're not, we might have some pockets of higher demand, but as a, the city as a whole is not, there's not just, you know, thousands of people waiting to come in and open up an STR in Louisville. So I'm not necessarily that concerned that there's just going to be a complete inundation of applications received once the, what, the 4th, on March the 4th comes up. So I, if we have 77 right now, I mean, if we, if we went to 150, that's 0.5 or 0.6% of our overall stock that would be allowed to be an STR.
Correct. Right, right now at this point in time, it's 0.3% of total single-family residential.
So, I mean, I don't know how that compares to what's being used as long-term rentals right now. I don't know if we have that number, but it's, it's so tiny. I would be fine with increasing it to 150.
Other comments?
Yeah, respectfully, I understand that, and I thought that through my head. My concern with going above and beyond is that even though it's a tiny percentage, they could all congregate in one neighborhood, and once that happens, you can't get them out. Because I don't want to go through, once something gets grandfathered in, I don't want to try to get them out because I think that's inherently unfair. So once I, once we rent and we allow somebody to go with an STR, we can't come back and take that away from them. So my concern is that we might get five in one neighborhood, that we can't then apply these rules to get them to split up again. That's my concern.
So to be fair, though, we didn't have any regulation before.
Yeah.
And we didn't see that happen either. I just don't, I don't want to over-regulate for fear that the absolute worst-case scenario can happen.
I hear, but we did kind of have that happen before, and I think that was the genesis of this concern. It happened over there in that neighborhood by the lake.
It happened in one neighborhood in the whole city.
No, fair enough. It was one neighborhood. And I guess to that same point, I would rather, because we can't unring this bell once we ring it, I would rather be a little more stringent on the front side, and that's just my thoughts on it.
Yeah, I do.
I, the only way that we're going to have a flood of people buying up houses next door to each other is if all of those houses were for sale. I don't necessarily think we had a quote "STR" problem before as we did have a density problem or a lack of a limitation on one particular street that caused a slew of issues. I don't see in a five- or six-month time that it's going to take us to get this information together and us to look at it, study it, adopt it, that we're going to have five, six, seven, eight houses on a street bought up. Everybody would have to sell in order for that to happen. So I'm with Kristen as far as if we're going to look at limiting the number until we get all the information that's gathered, that it doesn't, it doesn't need to be... It doesn't need to stay where it's at. It needs to be 120, 150.
Did you have a number in mind?
Yeah, 90, where we're at today. That's the number I had in mind. And I do, I do, I am not a hair-on-fire, tinfoil-hack kind of person, but I do think this is one of those situations where I'd rather, I'd rather be a little more restrictive rather than trying to react if something like that does happen. So, and I will say also that, well, help me understand. So if we go through and say, okay, we have to have a bill of sale, and somebody has to say, I want an STR, or they have to go through and say, I got financing, and I'm going to buy an STR on this street. Those are two different scenarios.
STR.
That's true. That's a good point as well. I didn't even consider that. Somebody could just say, I want...
I'm just going to turn my house into an STR?
That's right, yeah. That's a good point. So again, that's why I think I'd rather have, be a little more restrictive on the backside, or on the front side here than try to clean it up on the back.
The STR permit that's issued is basically only good for a year, so they'd have to go through that renewal process again.
Okay, that's interesting. So if we did have, if we did have worst-case scenario, we went, had a neighborhood that had six, we had a neighborhood of 12 people, 12 houses, and six of them said, we're not going to be an STR. They didn't have to sell, to Mayor's point. They just said, we want to be an STR now. In a year, they'd be subject to the density clauses that we put in place?
Have to make a determination on those being grandfathered, those existing.
Yeah, I was imagining the way we would draft that is if you have a permit, you would get preference to continue that permit. So you would get, I mean, but if you just didn't apply and you were three months late, someone else could come in and you might lose it.
So now I'm back to where I was before, is that we can't unring the bell once it's rung?
So, but that does, what you're saying is that if we set it at a, if we set it closer to where it is right now, there is a possibility that someone is, who is currently permitted to operate an STR out of their property, they could lose it if they, well, even if just some other applications came in ahead of theirs.
Yeah, so the existing ones, we would allow to go through that permitting process, but then we'd have to make a determination on if they weren't advertising or they didn't reapply, when would they drop off and allow for...
The timing of it, if March 4th, somebody that doesn't have an STR can apply, we didn't start taking permits into, what, July? So they're going to be through June. We're going to start getting new applications now, right?
Yeah, so if you, if you set it at the exact number that we have, that'll get through the ones that we have also that are in permitting. If you have a bigger capacity on that, it allows some other people to come in in that timeframe. And right now, they, and I think we're going to have to address that, whatever maximum number is, I would imagine it's per year, but we need to, we'll need to bring that to you. That's not been fully vetted at this point, but we'll bring that to you on March 3rd if that's what y'all are interested in looking at.
Other comments?
Yeah, I think, just hearing what I've heard so far, I do think, you know, this is an ever-evolving thing that we're dealing with right now. I do think that, you know, part of this, we still need some more time to look at this. But maybe somewhere in between the 90 and the 150, maybe like 125. Maybe that could be something we could look at.
I think 130 would be 0.05%, so, or something like that.
Leave it to the physicist.
Number, round numbers are good.
Brandon?
My comment would be to just figure out the way administratively that we, we already have some people, I guess, that are in the queue, that will handle those first. I would say, if it's going to take us four months to do it, let's administratively say, like a percentage that we can get through, or a number that we can get through per month, up to whatever that maximum is. So that gives us, that incentivizes council to get this done, and it also allows staff to actually work these in a thoughtful way.
Okay, so I've heard, I don't think I have a total consensus, but that's fine. We are going to bring it back to you on March 3rd with a recommendation from staff, and then you guys can have this discussion and arm wrestle it out at that point. Perfect. Okay, thank you for that.